Uh, we'll call please.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Recardis.
Here.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Alderman Madre.
Here.
Alderman Jeffries.
Here.
Air Force.
Here.
We have a call. Russell, you lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our glad allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Uh, let me see, we don't have, uh, social protection or public hearing. And, yeah, we're gonna address the, uh, everybody's gonna need to come keep quiet tonight, we're gonna keep order, please. Citizens request to speak, and you'll have three minutes, and items on the agenda, please. First person will be Mr. Jackson, Jerry Jackson, please state your address.
Jerry Jackson, one six six one two Curlew.
Jamaica Beach.
I have a question, should we uncap?
Kind of you.
I just don't have a place to put it. Okay, um, I have a suggestion or something on, on assigning the, and voting for the, uh, people on the zoning board adjustment. The, oh, zoning board adjustment is a very important group of people involved in, yeah, in Jamaica Beach. And I would like to see this tabled until the new people come onboard and they select, whoever it be, you, you might be, never turn over, but I'd like to see them select the people to go on to the adjustment. Because it's a year or two-year term, and they'd be more familiar with it, and it would, because it's an important part of Jamaica Beach when, because when they make an adjustment and they say, this is it, there's nothing we can do about it. I don't think you can appeal it, I don't think you can do anything about it, there, it's like law. And I'd like to see us table that until the new, new people come on April first or May, whenever the time period is. And I have a question on, I'm looking at some of the items on here, there's eighteen items. I'm, my, just a question, and I know there's no answer, but that's a lot of items, and some of these items, I would have liked to have seen us discuss them six, eight months ago. Instead of coming up on the, how many more meetings do we have? I don't know if you can talk to me or not, I don't know how many meetings
I can.
we have before the other people come on. One, we have one more meeting. And it's still a lot of
lot of on the agenda, so that's all I have, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Keep this up here, would you? It's hard to hold on.
Uh, next person will be Sarah Connepik.
Thank you. Sarah, uh, Connepik, one six six one zero Francis Drake Road. I want to make sure the minutes of the March twenty twenty-three city council meeting are not approved due to the omission of a key piece of information that was submitted by Alderman Jones. I was here, I witnessed her handing the letter to former city secretary Debbie Nesbit, it's also on public videotape. Alderman Jones provided a copy of the letter she received from Olson and Olson, stating that they had completed a thorough investigation, which, by the way, cost the city over fifteen thousand dollars. Olson and Olson thanked Alderman Jones for her cooperation in the investigation, but most importantly, they reported that they found no evidence to substantiate the claims of former chief of police Brad Heinman. As far as retaliation and discrimination, defamation of character, official oppression and harassment. I trust the city will honor my request and ensure the letter is placed in the official minutes so they can be approved with the letter, uh, and the letter can be published for all to see. And so the healing and recovery process for the negative campaign launched against Alderman woman Jones can begin.
Thank you. Next person will be Deborah Taber.
Deborah Taber, one six nine one six Beach, Connepik. I'm gonna talk on a couple items tonight, uh, agenda item number seven and number twelve. Care of that. I hope that tonight, Mr. Mayor, you will provide the documentation about the discrepancy in the hourly rate our police officers were paid for hazard pay. You answered a question at the meet and greet on Saturday and stated it was signed off on by Sean Hutchinson and voted on by council. I'd love to see that documentation. I've searched agendas and minutes for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and I'm unable to find any record of council approval for either an agenda item or a public vote after an executive session for a rate of hourly pay over the seven oh eight approved by council for any member of the police department. The excessive rate of pay for police officers and the amount of over fifteen thousand dollars documented by payroll records speaks to gross mismanagement of taxpayer monies, even if it doesn't rise to the level of a criminal charge being prosecuted by the district attorney's office. Item number twelve, conflict of interest. O R R records reflected in March of twenty twenty-two, Olson and Olson build the city of Jamaica Beach for clarification of section one seven six point oh nine of the local government code. This relates to conflict of interest following documents. I'm requesting that any ruling or recommendations made by Olson and Olson be made public for clarification of this matter. This conflict of interest exists between Russell Recardis as an elected official and his business risk and maintenance. Open records requests and check registered entries indicate that over the years that he has been in office, he's been paid well over a hundred thousand dollars for services provided to Jamaica Beach. And I'll finish with this, just because you can doesn't mean you shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Next person, uh, Pamela Jos- Joslet.
Joslet. I'll be easier, you can hear me now. Hello, I'm Pamela Joslet, forty-four oh eight Hilton Way, and I'm here to speak on agenda topic ten. And this is regarding the fact that we have not had an audit for three years. So Texas state law requires that all annual purpose local governments publish within one hundred and eighty days of the close of the fiscal year, a complete set of financial statements presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles and audited in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards by a firm of licensed certified public accountants. Jamaica Beach has missed that deadline for the past three years. And attached are the results of the status of the financial audits in surrounding cities. So I went and looked on the websites, different things, and Jamaica Beach is by far the worst offender of the, um, of completing their audits. Jamaica Beach is really no different than any other city dealing with COVID and with staff shortages. During that time, auditors didn't stop working, they found alternatives to get the job done. And our auditors, even our auditors, they didn't stop working. In fact, they did my personal income tax statements for the past several years, and I never missed anything. So we just, we need these audit, we need them all done, and it's a shame that we're in this shape. And we can't move forward financially until we know where we stand today, after getting up to date on the audits. And then my question is, when I see that there's a Texas state law, it's like, well, how come nothing's been done? So who holds the city accountable for this three-year delay? Well, it's the citizens and it's our vote. Thank you very much.
Next person will be Sharon Bauer.
Hi, I'm Sharon Bauer, sixteen, seven, twenty, Sandpiper Row. I'd like to express my concern that no support, oh, I'm speaking on the general agenda item and then two and four and five. I would like to express my concern that no supporting documentation was provided with the posted agenda. How can council, how can council members make informed decision on what action should be taken? The city has been posting full agenda packets, which have included information on new business to be discussed, so citizens could comment intelligently at a council meeting or could reach out to a council member prior to the meeting. I'm concerned about decisions being made and avoided, and I think all of the new business items should be tabled until more information is provided. I'd also like additional information about item number two, hiring Murray and Law with P L L C as the city attorneys. Historically, they've used Greer and Hertz. Then Olson and Olson was hired, I thought it was for developing policies and procedures, although apparently they've been used for other general legal services. The proposed law for Murray and Law does not appear to specialize in municipal law. Several of their online sources said that they're typically, very frequently used in employee conflicts. So I didn't know if that, we're hiring them to defend a wrongful termination claim. And, um, if so, I thought we typically had that handled by the municipal league to defend against lawsuits. So I would like some, hopefully clarity on that when we, if my first comment is not accepted. And then concerning the board of adjustments, I had suggested to the council and mayor that the opportunity to serve on this board be posted. I do apologize if I missed that public announcement. And the other thing, it's looking at the suggested board members, I kinda hate to overload community-minded citizens, and several of the proposed board members are on the beautification team as well. And I'm also a little bit concerned that there could be a conflict of interest with one of the proposed members being the wife on the planning and zoning commission, and then the husband being on the board of adjustments. Because the board of adjustments is to make adjustment, to make final rulings on things that the zoning commission did not approve. So that appears to be a bit of a conflict. So anyway, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, reports from directors, police and fire, uh, they are all included in the pack. Does anyone have any questions for them?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is, is Chief Garrett here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
There.
It's coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it was, it was posted last night that the non-emergency number is, was not working, is that working?
It's not up and running, yes, ma'am.
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you post a follow-up?
You got it, yes, ma'am.
That'd be wonderful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then also, Chief Garrett, I apologize, I should have said, there's just an error that's gonna be transmitted in a minute.
No.
Okay, I'll go.
ET, we love you.
Anything on Rob? Uh, some reports. Branch, would you like to give your report?
Thanks for coming in, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
So I guess I should just start off with the, the main problem right now, and that's lift station number seven. And, uh, we mobilized last Friday to lift stations, and it was identified that, uh, it was having problems. It had overflow, we reported it to T C Q as required. We found that the breaker had tripped because the pump was running continuously, and it's like a safety to keep the pump from running up. Well, I think everyone here knows that that lift station has had a problem for a while, and it had a leak. Well, that leak got a lot bigger, substantially bigger, and it was just cycling the sewage, and it's a continuous circle, it wasn't pumping it out. So we had to set up a bypass pump, get it pumping, and now we got it, uh, down until we get a plan to move forward on that. And as far as, uh, the water system goes, we've seen a dramatic decrease in water, water main breaks and water line breaks. Uh, we might, I don't know that we have it totally under control, but it seems like we're starting to get ahead of that quite a bit. And that, uh, now when we put this next phase in, I don't know what that's gonna do to the older pipe. But right now, I feel confident saying that I think we've stabilized for the moment. Okay, the sewer treatment plant, we've got the blower, it's being repaired as we speak. Should be done this week, and back end, this is essential equipment for the plant to run properly. Um, we got the backup blower running right now, shouldn't be a problem until we get the new one fixed. There is some other issues we wanna, uh, address in the future with the plant, but nothing major, nothing that's gonna affect the plant in any kind of way. And, uh, there's such things as lighting, um, air conditioning, things that the blower system and the computer system needs to maintain its operation, its operation. So, other than that, um, are there any questions for me?
Yes, sir. A comment was made, um, this weekend that the lift station was down, is that correct?
Uh, when I got called, yeah, I thought it was down.
Excuse me, I miss- misspoke, that the wastewater treatment plant was down this weekend.
Oh, um, no.
Now, just the lift station, am I correct?
Just the lift station, yeah, that's two totally different items.
So the wastewater treatment plant was not good?
No, it has not been, no.
There was another comment made a couple weeks ago that we're about to dump all of our sewage into the canals, is that correct?
No, that's not even close, that's not even good in such sense.
Thank you, sir.
It's operating properly right now.
Thank you, appreciate it, Dan.
Yeah.
Next item is consent agenda and approval of minutes, uh, approval of minutes, may I have a motion? To, I guess we need to discuss, uh, discuss approval of minutes for the regular business, regular city council meeting on three twenty twenty-three, is there a motion to discuss?
Well, I make the motion to discuss.
Second.
My, uh, um, just like Chair, like Sarah said, um, I did request that the, um, that my document be included with the minutes, and, uh, according to the seventy-two hour rule, it needs to be included with seventy-two hours, and, you know, with the minutes and on the website. So I'd appreciate if we tabled this until we, um, until it's done properly.
Are you talking about the one that was, is it on?
Well, that, that is a new document, but that was not posted, um, with the original documents that I was sent. So, um, I just request that it be, be added properly.
So it, it is on here properly now?
No, this was added this afternoon, or, but it was not add, it was not part of the original documents. We have six new extra pages to my agenda packet compared to what was emailed to me.
It doesn't pass much.
Okay.
The minutes don't need to send to our room.
So we tabled this and resubmit when council receives.
Right.
Yes.
Including the document.
Yes. What's it get back right now? Next time. But you can't add something after you're posted.
Do I?
Thank you.
Oh, good.
What my comment?
Yes.
I would like to add that we are working on skeleton staff, and everybody has jumped in trying to keep the doors open and the lights out, so we are not working at full capacity, and our staff is doing a wonderful job, they're trying, like the, all right, we, um, we've thrown a new workload on a bunch of our, our employees, and they're doing the best that they can.
So, so given what Robert just said, I would like to make a motion to table. Have a second. All on paper? Next item is new business. Uh, new business, the city was forced to address some accusations. Uh, it went from social media gossip to accusations of record, which legal counsel was advised of the intention to address to all of the council, and they agreed. Documents shared will be included when council approves these minutes in the next meeting, or you may request them before then.
Pardon me, can you say that again?
Where are you reading now, the picture statement?
It's my statement.
It's not in there.
No.
Thanks, my statement.
And what documents are you saying that we can request?
Documents that, um, that may be produced.
Documents.
Or not produced, but that are available. And we've done it all the time, you do it with your mayor's report, right? Your mayor's report's not, not given before.
I don't have a mayor's report.
I'm sorry, your Alderman report. Right, your Alderman report?
Right.
Is not, but it's on the agenda.
Right.
Okay. It's included in the next month's approval of minutes.
So these are gonna be supporting documents that it has been used?
Uh, could be, I mean, and there may not be any documents.
Supporting documents will be, since you say that again, supporting documents will be included in the
That's me trying to figure this out.
Yeah, uh, in the, maybe, you, anyone can request them if they're, if they're available or provided.
Can you read that?
Documents shared will be included, or could be included, and when council approves these minutes in the next meeting, or you may, anyone may request them here.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, first item is discussion, consideration, take action to approve Georgia Karmak interim city secretary. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make the motion, we discuss there. Second.
Actually, I have a motion to, to table all of the things on the agenda. There are no documentation to come with everything. There is no documentation.
Uh, yes.
You have one motion on the first.
Yeah, we have a motion already on the fourth. Thank you.
Can we have a second?
We have a second, yeah.
A second. He already said.
Open it up for discussion. Any discussion, yes.
Me neither.
This is, this
I said we neither heard.
Yeah, clarification, this is interim for, until such time that we can
In my state law, you have to have, is it the secretary of office on it?
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, but I'm just
Yeah.
I'm just asking questions because I'm confused, so you may
You are correct.
And I, I'm just, it's clarifying that this is interim until such time that we had a chance to evaluate any other can, any other possible candidates for that.
Great, okay, thank you.
May I ask you just for a second? And for clarification, Georgia Karmak, excuse me.
Yes.
Currently serves as our court clerk, director of the pool, probably other things that she's gonna be mad at me for not mentioning, but as it stands right now, she is our oldest acting city employee. She has had some cross-training with Debbie and the other departments. So I just wanted all the citizens to know her state.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Georgia Karmak as interim city secretary. Interim, right, interim. I checked it out.
Oh, it's Beverly.
Hi.
You have items, thank you.
I would also have to leave too. Jordan, you had some experience before you come here as a secretary.
I came from the county.
From the county.
We'd like, uh, items two and three, or actually, I just want to take them one at a time. I'd like to table item number two. Mr. Cal Dixon didn't, wasn't able to make it today, so I'd like to have a motion to table that.
Mayor, I would make that motion to table item number two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Item number three, uh, discussion, consideration, take action on resolution number twenty twen- twenty-three dash zero four, granting the city permission to participate in the interlocal purchasing system. Tips, I would like to make a motion to table that also, saying that we're not able to make it today, had emergency.
I make the motion, we table that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, uh, next item is discussion, consideration, take action to appoint Connie Tier to the planning and zoning commission. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second, first.
Any discussion?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Is Connie here? Is Connie here? She's a client. One pretty good reason why I could be here, just so. God, if I could trade places, you and me both.
Connie comes with a lot of construction experience, I've been told. Okay, um, still, Robert, you wanna add anything to?
Same thing that I, what I heard also, that she's comes with construction and blueprints green and everything that comes with.
I believe the family owns a development business, am I correct?
That's what I've understood also. Yeah, actually, that's what I've heard. By, by the, by the, uh, Kim.
Well, if she's anything like my wife, she knows her way around a building site then.
Well, I would suggest that, um, I'd like some of, some, some documents that has her background, and, um, and I would hope that she would be in attendance before we take a vote.
Someone else?
Do I have a motion to vote?
I make a motion to that.
On
South second.
All in favor of appointing Ms. Connie Tier? Next item for, on the agenda is discussion, consideration, take action to appoint David Torino, Tom Quigley and Leek Robertson to a one-year term to the zoning board of adjustments, and Denny Tier and Paul Rodriguez to a two-year term to the zoning board of adjustments. In addition, appoint Mike Kringle, Harold Trinhane, and Michael McLean as alternates to the zoning board of adjustments. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I make the motion to discuss it. Second. First thing I'm gonna say is, uh, I think we should heed the request of the citizens to just be delayed and to go out and get people to develop who else might want to be on this board. This board is, just what Mr. Jackson said, it's, it's the final authority. This is it. So it's one of the most important things we're gonna do. And I think it needs more consideration. I'd like to see it tabled, Mr. Peter.
Well, I, I do have a concern as well, I mean, um, I apologize in advance for saying this, but you have a wife on one board and a husband on another, and I, I'm, I'm just saying, this might be all
You can make adjustments.
Yeah, we can, we can always put, uh, move one of the, uh, move one of the alternates up to the, uh, Move one of the alternates up to the, uh, into, into his place.
Yes, we also have alternates.
Yeah, we only have three alternates.
To me, and I, you know, I'm just kind of that way. It's, it's probably not a problem, but it is an appearance.
It's really a problem in other states. My gosh, in other states, they actually have lawsuits and all this stuff.
Well, like I said, we make one quick adjustment, we make one, move one of the alternates. Excuse me, excuse me.
Can I say a little background real quick?
Absolutely.
Okay. The last time we went out for, for volunteers for this was, well, we've done it two years ago and this year. We can barely scratch up enough people willing to do it. This year, not only do we have enough to do it, we have some alternates. All right? This is extremely important. We get put into place because we have several citizens waiting to build homes to do improvements. Um, I've got several emails today and I appreciate everybody reaching out to me. It's nice to get some, some communication from citizens. However, we have one gentleman that's been waiting over eight months for planning and zoning board. All right, what are we going to tell him? Wait a couple more weeks? It's very hard on speaking. The city has had so many problems trying to find volunteers. I think it's great seeing what people have. We have members that are willing to do this. If you guys don't like the conflict of interest with his husband and wife, I would like to make the recommendation we pull off Denny Tier and move up one of the alternatives.
Is all three of them here? Is McLean's here? Uh, Mr. Trahan?
He's here.
He's here. And is Mike Kringle here? Is he not here? Okay. Which one of y'all would like to be moved up?
I think that this means, I, we have other people who are interested.
Volunteer?
We have other people who were interested in this, and I think it needs to be put on the city website. And we should interview.
Interview.
Plenty, everyone who wants to be invited. This is kind of a hand.
Do we have that ordinance?
Yes, I have it right here.
Okay, thank you. Can we read it? Or you want to read it?
You've read it, um.
Go ahead, Rob. Let Rob read it.
Okay, it's right here.
What ordinance is it?
It's a lot of information, bear with me a little bit. Okay, right here. In the section fourteen forty, it's ordinance, ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero three. Okay? The mayor shall have the authority to nominate members of the board of adjustments upon expiration of the above terms until unexpired terms of any member who resigns or no longer meets the qualifications of office. The city council shall ratify nominations. Okay, so that's just the short version. But if any problem arises in the future, city council can come in and change this.
Yeah, what you're saying is correct. The mayor does have that, the mayor does have that. You absolutely have the authority to do that. City council absolutely has a governing body, has an authority to approve or disapprove.
Correct.
And what I'm saying is, I would like this to be tabled, to get more people involved.
We've got, we've got plenty of people involved, correct, at this point. We've got, we need, uh, let me see. As stated right here, we've got three extra.
I'm not ordering that. But, now, other people in the community, they, some of these other people, it's required.
And I'm not saying they're not, but when we reached out and started reaching out.
You reached out, but this, how did you do it?
Uh, we, Mr. Quintero and myself, we started asking right?
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Not this term, but last time it was posted on the city website, we did not have enough applicants. We started going door to door to fill these positions.
That's correct. That is correct.
And after we could not find applicants, we started literally going door to door begging people to help out. All right?
On the original board, we actually got it, but you can't have ten people.
How long ago was that?
What?
Last year, last year.
Yeah, last year.
When we had the original board of adjustments.
Yeah.
That included Sharon, Deborah.
Well, but not, but that was just the handful.
Correct.
I must have had like fifteen people. Some of them I didn't.
Rob, did we not have problems last night?
And what happened to the other board? Uh, were you ever, um, uh, did you resign? Hey, I have another.
We're not engaged.
We're not engaged citizens.
That's it, period, we're not.
So did, were, were, with the other board adjustments?
There was term with, there was term with.
They were turned down.
They were turned down.
It just timed out, is what happened.
All of them timed out?
It timed out because we didn't realize we had a board of adjustment and we didn't use.
We didn't either.
We did not realize.
David Torino was the only one who did not turn out, the other ones had, um.
Excuse me?
David, uh, Torino.
No, from, from the get-go, we had a board of adjustment that we should have went to. We didn't realize we had a board of adjustment, so we didn't do it. Is that not correct?
They were turned down.
They were turned down.
It was, we didn't have one.
Yes, so basically, we didn't have.
At what point were they turned down?
They wanted two-year terms.
Yeah, they wanted one-year, two-year terms.
So all this nine months we've been waiting, all nine months.
For Curtis.
For Curtis. All this nine months we've been waiting. We could have resolved this three, four, five months.
But we're trying to handle some of it other ways, uh, with the pending.
No, I'm not going to go there. But in fact, we had a board of adjustment, we knew policy, we know how it should go, and we didn't.
Well, you were the one that remembered.
Sir?
You were the one who remembered that we had a board of adjustments. You brought it to our attention. We forgot and it did not get entered in. Well, you didn't come to us and tell us about it. You waited till it came up to city.
I didn't wait, it just came up to. Excuse me. Mayor?
Yeah, for me.
Okay. I looked for an ordinance on our old ordinance page and I could not find it. It was not until that last meeting when, uh, Alderman Madre brought to my attention. I, then I went back to the old ordinance and found it. I apologized to the city on Facebook stating that I did not know that it was there and it was my mistake. I dropped the ball, okay, and that's what I did. And that's how I.
And probably I didn't bring it up because I thought that's what we were going to do from when you wrote the thing.
Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Until you wrote the letter and said council has to approve this, I thought we were just screaming on it, go to the board of adjustments, and the thing would be resolved.
Well, you still, you still had to have those.
Yeah, we had the positions filled.
Yeah, you had to have those positions filled. That's, that's the only thing here.
I thought we had a full board.
You had to turn it down.
And we had a full board.
Nobody did.
They were having.
Yeah, I discussed it, Caitlin, and then we.
Oh, and turns are timing out.
Yes, yes, yeah.
But you didn't know that either.
No, not until I started reading.
No, I printed it out. I didn't realize it.
But that's what we're, um, I mean, would we, everybody be happy with substituting that for Denny Tier out?
No.
I would. We're, uh.
You getting some, calling?
We have, uh.
The woman in five days of the board.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Oh, that's it? That's it?
Cool. Um, I'm trying to finish. We have both Harold Trahan and Michael McLean very interested in doing it. So we have two for one spot. Did Paul agree this morning?
Is there, is this so critical that this couldn't reach until the next meeting? So that more people can understand what the board of adjustments does? More people can have a chance to volunteer and.
We don't need any more volunteers at this point.
Uh, the next meetings, I want to wait this much?
No, actually, they're waiting.
No, we're only having once a month.
The, uh. We just want to figure out, you've got two for one position.
Can, can I make one suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Wait a second. If you're going to have a, wait till another, nothing's been done two weeks.
No, no, we're not, we're doing it now.
Okay. I, I used to, Mr.
Put this off long enough.
This first one has been waiting a long time.
Order, please.
Do we need to go up or down?
I'll make the motion, just tell me, in place of Denny Tier, because of the conflict of interest, who would we like to put into that place?
I would say, well, Harold and Michael McLean are here ready, so.
Well, we only need one, right?
You're ready.
I like the way you just got it.
Well, we are discussing about the, the candidates that are doing it, so you can't speak. Go ahead, Michael.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm, I've got twenty-six years of the tower of engineering. I mean, and, and it's pretty good.
Thank you.
Pretty good, uh.
So there we go.
There we go.
Harold?
You figured it out.
Harold?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to add?
Uh, I've been a citizen of Baton Beach for thirteen years. I've got a long history of construction. Uh, I got common sense, okay? Uh, uh, my conflict resolution is pretty good. Uh, uh, but, uh, you know, other than that, I've built a few houses, I've built a few boat docks. Uh, I've been in construction my whole life, forty years. That's where, that's all I got to offer, not an engineer. Being engineers don't get along. I build them. They tell me it's wrong. No, just kidding.
Did you say you're not an engineer?
I am not an engineer.
You have my vote.
Uh, should we?
Mayor, that, that would have been helpful that we could have had an interview just like that at a public meeting so we could have all met them ahead of time.
Thank you, it's not required, though, thank you. Uh, should we, since Harold and Michael are here, and substitute them for Denny and Paul maybe? I'm, I'm sure Paul probably would not, not be committed. Do we make him an alternate?
Let's change Paul over to alternate.
Make her full time.
Yeah. Okay, so what's that?
I will concede to the engineer if, if they're.
Push comes to shove.
Don't take that personal. Okay, then at this time, I would like to make a motion to pass number five with the following amendments. We are going to remove Mr. Denny Tier and Mr. Paul Rodriguez. Paul Rodriguez is, well, I'd like to put both of them as alternates, okay? Move those two to alternates, and then I would like to, then in their place, put in Harold Trahan and Michael McLean.
Do I have a second? All in favor of appointing as stated?
Yes.
Next item is discussion.
Thanks for all.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Cause you all wouldn't know what you're getting at.
Look at us, can't think of a better question.
Next item will be, let me see. Number six is discussion, consideration, take action for the RFP with the solid waste. Do I have a, um, we did vote, right?
Motion, yeah, motion to discuss.
Yes, number six, motion to discuss. Consider, consideration and take action for RFP for solid waste, so I have a motion to discuss.
Is there a request or a motion here?
No, no, we're just, we didn't discuss.
Do I have a motion to discuss?
Yes.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
So, yeah, my question is, is this, is this, is this? About the current airways?
Yes. We're doing this because, we're running a month-to-month contract with them right now, and they are going up on their rates, and I felt it was best for the city if we, we publish an RFP and get the best price with other companies as well.
So that's what we're voting on, is the RFP.
Or actually, give me permission to publish an RFP.
Right.
Go out for bids.
Yeah, go out for bids.
That, that makes more sense.
Okay, that, that, I respond. Can I make one comment?
Yeah.
If we were members of the tip system, we wouldn't have to do this and it would save the city time a lot.
Absolutely. Any other discussions? Do we have a motion to vote?
Okay.
Second. Uh, Russell, Russell made a motion, give a second.
What did you make the motion out of? What was it?
To approve the discussion, or, uh, the, uh, RFP for solid waste.
Okay. I'll check it back.
Do we have a motion to vote? Second, okay. Do, uh, all in favor? Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Discussion, consideration, and take action for possible cares act investigation. Uh, my motion to discuss?
I'd like to table this because I have no, um, documentation.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second. So my question here, Mr. Mayor, is if we have these allegations, what have we done to investigate set allegations and, uh, and, uh, what is our, what is our path forward if we decide to investigate?
Well, at this point, I mean, most of the, you know, it's been continually brought up by Alderman Jones. Uh, we'd like to find out why, why it keeps being brought up at this point.
You say you have no information regarding this, but yet this is.
Well, for instance.
Can I finish? I have pages and pages of open records requests, I have documentation where you've sent letters to the Texas Attorney General, the sheriff's office, that you're going to make an appeal on the district attorney's decision. So it surprises me when you say you don't have documentation regarding this matter. You brought this matter up to city council and the mayor multiple, multiple occasions, and now you're telling us that you don't have any information on it?
I'm still not getting.
Is this what you want?
I'm still not getting an explanation.
Go ahead.
I'm still not getting an explanation of why two officers were paid, why all of our officers were paid seven oh eight per hour for hazard pay. Then two officers were paid their salary plus their hazard, plus their salary again, plus seven oh eight per hour. So, which added to about fifteen thousand dollars for those two officers. In the, in the minute after the executive meeting, all that was voted on was that the police department working with the public would receive their pay plus seven oh eight per hour. And, um.
To answer.
That's the crux.
To answer Alderman Welch's question, how much investigation has been done on this matter? Who all have you contacted investigating this matter?
Well, because I could never get an answer from the mayor.
No, excuse me, who all have you contacted to investigate on this matter? What different agencies?
Yeah. This question, uh.
Do we need to further?
I wish you want to know what he had done about it.
No, I, my question is, is do we need to further the investigation? That's my question.
Oh, okay.
Okay, my question to Alderman Jones, who all have you contacted to investigate on this matter?
Are we doing an investigation about what I've done right now? Is this the investigation?
That's not my understanding. I'm simply asking, how many people have you contacted that you've brought in to investigate this matter? That's all. I, I know you've been in contact with multiple agencies.
I called the attorney general and asked for their advice. They told me to call the Texas Rangers and I followed their advice and took it to the district attorney.
Okay. And then also in your statement, last meeting, you said you're going to file an appeals with the district attorney?
No, I said I was going to file an appeal with the, um, attorney general ruling. And, um, no. Actually, I would have to go look at my words to be able to answer that correctly. I just want to know, first, I don't even know how much the care back was. Second, I'd like to know who approved to pay fifteen thousand dollars extra to two officers.
Uh, Georgia, would you like to share some of your? Georgia, would you like to share some of your information that's been recommended?
Sure, so on October fifth, twenty twenty, item number eight on the agenda states that there was a special action assigning hazard duty pay from October first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first of twenty twenty in the amount of seven oh eight per hour to all full-time Jamaica Beach Police Department staff members coming in close contact with the public to enforce health or public safety orders and seek reimbursement of said hazard pay through the cares act. Found that on our.
I know that's what.
On November second, the minutes were approved from that meeting, item eight was indicated as being passed unanimously. So after that, prior to that, we lost Lupe as our city secretary. Uh, Nola took over as interim, Nola and I worked together to issue payouts on checks, payroll, all of those items. We also brought in a CPA. When you look at the pay subs for all of the officers, it's got their regular hourly rate and then it's got a hazard pay line item on it. So the hazard pay line item shows the seven oh eight and then it's going to show their eighty-six point six seven. When it came to Officer Hyman and Officer Oakland, I couldn't get the seven oh eight in there properly, I had to wait on CPA. So the payouts that they received looked like lump sums where it's everything paid out in kind of a weird fashion, but it's because they were getting back pay from where I couldn't pay them without the CPA helping me adjust everything in the QuickBooks system. So what they received was face-to-face time only, which all of their time cards differentiate between hazard pay and regular hours that they clocked. So they were only paid for time that they did face-to-face patrol or face-to-face investigations with the community.
So that being said, they did get paid seven per eight per hour, but it doesn't look like that because they were salaried and employed and the way you and the CPA set it up was at a lump sum because it was back pay, am I correct?
Correct.
So they were paid their original approved seven oh eight.
Yes.
And not only you did that, but you had our city CPA help you configure those numbers.
We brought in a consultant CPA for that time, but I do have his contact information that we need to contact you regarding that.
And then Sean Hutchinson signed off on it, brought it through Mayor Spicer in Des Moines.
Yes.
And then he brought it to City Council.
Yes.
The City Council voted on it unanimously.
Yes, so, so my next question is, Clay, when I brought that to you two times in person and one in a text and, and in an email, why didn't you help to inform me that I could have gone to the secretaries and gotten this information?
If you remember, let me see, I think it was, uh, May, May twenty-fifth, you and I had a, a meeting and you told me what your plan was, that you were considering bringing it to the DA and I said that was not a wise decision because it had already went through the proper channels. It went through Sean Hutchinson, it went through.
That's, that is not correct. I don't remember you ever saying that to me. When I.
We've had that conversation twice.
No, that is not correct, no.
Okay, well, now we have the correct information.
Yay, Georgia!
I do have a question, Georgia. I know you paid them a lump sum and I'm sure it's calculated, but in other words, you have these people working at a certain length of time. If, if you multiply it all out, you know, that's just plain math. Does it, does it reconcile to the amount of money we pay them? Do we pay them too much, too little?
No, we paid them the exact amount that they were due and I would not process that payout until I had someone else check it first, which is why we paid them the lump sum.
So, so, so it wasn't double dip, it wasn't forty-three hours?
No. No, it was.
So if you add all the hours up and it just took the hours for that length of time and you multiply the time and their base salary for each one, add the seven oh eight, right?
Correct.
It would come to the lump sum amount.
Could you get all of that together and, and show, and show your work for me? I would be happy to, thank you.
And really, you know, here we are, after all this commotion. A simple answer.
We've given that simple answer, we've had multiple meetings, council meetings, it's been brought up and we've talked about that even before.
I've brought it up during the executive meetings and still didn't get that kind of an answer.
Yeah, that's the first time I've heard this kind of answer.
Go ahead.
Given, I mean, we could argue back.
I don't know arguing, I'm just saying this is what you do.
It sounds like that to me.
You know what, you can do it.
So given, given.
Such a simple answer.
Yeah, so, given.
Just back.
Given you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm in favor of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discussion and consideration, take action on committee suggestions. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Yes.
Give us a second. What we're, what I'm trying to do is, you know, we'd like to address the type of committees that may be needed. Uh, participation at times has always been a big issue. Everybody please. We've, uh, we ended up a lot of times getting the same participating, same citizens participating in multiple committees, which is not a big issue, it's very appreciative, but, uh, when we do have those committees, we would like to, you know, participation from the masses is what we'd really like. You know, especially like after Saturday's event, that was great, I want to thank everybody for participating in that. Committees do and should be a group of citizens with common goals in mind. Another issue, uh, in, in these committees is we need to be aware of the legalities of, and the laws that can govern them and we have to always pay attention, I've heard people say, well, we need a committee to, uh, figure out about water, you know, if we need a water repairs or wastewater repair. No, we pretty much know, we need, we don't need a committee to tell us that, that needs to be done, we know it needs to be done. You know, the park board, you know, we've been trying to put that back together, we've kind of got a little bit of a start with, with some stuff with the beautification team, which has done a great job. We're, we're working on that, but my question is, is what, where do we need committees? And what, what, what's the suggestions?
Well, after serving on the park board for seven or eight years, maybe nine years, I would suggest a park board.
Anyone else?
Well, we currently have beautification, we currently have, um, special events.
Yeah, we're saying the Denny's been a great help.
I'm going to bring it back to you.
Yeah, well, why don't we put our heads together and see and visit with the community and see what other committees we may need. And, you know, we don't need to committee our city out, you know, we just need to make sure we, you know, we get input, we get input daily from citizens. A lot of them don't want to be up here, you know, saying things, they just soon give us a phone call, which we appreciate. But I, I guess from there is just see about, uh, make a motion to see about forming a few committees?
I think we need to table this and head on.
Yeah.
It seems like we need to think this out a little better.
Well, I'm not saying to put in one together, we're just trying to see if we need what we're looking.
We probably need a park board, I mean, I agree with Alderman Jones there. That's a no-brainer. That's kind of a no-brainer.
We didn't have enough volunteers for it previously, if you remember.
Yeah, I do remember.
But it seems like we have more citizens involved in this.
Yeah, that's appreciated.
So it's, it's possible that that could take off and it would be really great if there was some more of the dances very much. But I, I think, you know, we can suggest a park board, but other than that, I'm not kind of out of.
Well, no, no, we're not looking to, we're just looking that we, there is a need for that.
I think there is a need for some citizen committees, absolutely.
Absolutely.
The more the citizens are involved, the better we govern. Well, at this point, I'd like to reach out to the citizens and please ask them to email us your ideas about what committees we think would be beneficial. Know what you'd work up with that people?
That would be wonderful. Well, I guess we really don't need to vote on that.
No action taken?
No action taken. Uh, next item. Discussing, discussion and consideration and take action for beach plan in Fee Beach. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss?
Have a second.
Second.
I would like to say, you know, with this is, you know, we've, we've explored this for years and looked at it. We've made some adjustments, we've cut down on the traffic, uh, in the name of public safety, uh, out there. We've, you know, we're basically, with the way that GLO has approved our parking, is we're at about a hundred and eighty vehicles, uh, all parking perpendicular to the dunes. Uh, we've got the doom fencing up, we've got a safe turnaround area, we've really improved that, uh, public safety there on the beach. The next item is the, um, the Fee Beach and do you want to share with us what you had found out?
This is your agenda, I've, you tell me, you didn't even consult me and you put my name on it.
You've asked me for the last two months to put this on.
Where's the documentation?
No, I'm not interested in that. So you tell us where you're going with this, what do you want to do?
Uh, what do we want to do?
What do you want to do?
We want to try to figure out if, if it's something that we think is even doable.
We've done that several times.
Correct.
Every time there's a new, a new council, someone says, let's do a paid beach and it, and it always ends up being the same way, it's not feasible. I mean, it would cost too much or, and, I mean, it's just not, it never did work out.
My mother-in-law just gave me a letter she received from you talking about this paid beach and how you didn't have support from the council, so I thought it was great, we're trying to put all of these items to bed and, and discuss it.
Excuse me, your mother-in-law?
The letter that you just sent out.
Yes.
My mother-in-law approached me and said, what's going on with Fee Beach?
Oh, okay.
And then I saw it on the agenda because we're trying to wrap up all of these issues. So I thought you'd be all about it.
Yeah. I made my presentation.
Correct.
You guys are negative to it, that's all I can do.
We're not negative to it, I'm looking at it the way it should be looked at, it isn't going to work.
This has been brought to council, this is now the fifth time, so everybody knows, with multiple different mayors and.
No, it's fine, let's discuss it then. What do the, I don't want to defend this thing because here's the deal, or here's the thing. I went to Austin, I met with GLO, I know you say that GLO is not our friend, they will not help us.
Have you said that?
He has said that. Russell doesn't believe in it and you don't believe in it.
Don't put words in my mouth.
Okay, I'm sorry. But you, you have not supported it until we brought it up now. Is that not true?
Uh, I've opened up any suggestion that improves our community.
Well, this is one of the best suggestions you can have to improve our community and improve our property values. The thing being is that soon this will be the only beach on the west end that has parking on the beach.
And you know that for a fact?
I don't know that for a fact, but obviously in the paper and looking for you and these different comments, they seem to move you that way.
Yes, that, that is a possibility.
Kind of fair to say that, I think.
Right, and do you realize when we do that, that means no more golf carts on the beach?
No, it doesn't. It does not.
Well, I was gonna say, the, the vehicles, GLO considers golf carts the same as vehicles.
So what's the problem?
So what's the problem? I want to take my golf cart on the beach.
You can.
I think you misunderstood, Mayor, when he, you were talking about no vehicles at all on the beach.
Correct.
Now, I believe Alderman Madre, you were talking about our beach and all vehicles, correct?
Yes.
I think you just.
Okay, 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 I'm sorry.
But anyway, that's okay, that's great. So, I met with the GLO, I spent a lot of time, they assured me and, and actually I have, I have emailed back from them, guys, that they looked at the plan and they have, and, and, and they're, they're happy with it. They're supportive of it.
They, they are.
They are, I have it.
Okay.
Okay, and here's the thing, Mr. Mayor, the, the thing is, they want, they realize that that the burden of a small town to comply with the Texas Open Beaches Act is somewhat unreasonable in some ways, so they created a program, like Beach Use of Fee Program. Just for this, it's their plan, buddy, okay? And all we're doing is going in and using their plan. And what that means is part of the beach is free, part of it's paid. Free and paid have to be identical, everybody treated this manner. Cars parked just like we are now. Golf carts can park at the beach, right after, right after the little things are, just like we do now.
Okay, but let me see, GLO, we have spent many, many hours, many days.
Oh, we have.
And, and those, that Fee Beach is actually made for much bigger beaches. When you've got thirty miles of beach, you can say, okay, this fifteen miles is going to be Fee Beach and this fifteen miles is going to be.
They agreed, they agreed and they have responded in writing on email, okay? It is acceptable to the GLO to have when you come down, balcony to the left to be free, to the right to be paid. You know, I realized, Clay, when I went there, that that would be the main covenant, the main following we have. So I made doggone sure that I disclosed it, it was right out front, from the very first word that came out of my mouth.
Yeah, and that, that's a, that's a simple fix.
Cause I realized the rest could be worked out, but that couldn't.
No, what, what, what about the, uh, the charges?
The charges, um.
How much did they say you could charge or we could charge for?
They, and then the letters back from them, okay, emails and everything, I'm willing to share, I'm T. West, I didn't even get the opportunity to, but anyway, and I'm not complaining or anything, Russell, it's just the truth. You guys are so negative, to start, I guess give up.
Negative.
But anyway, what they said, Clay, was that we could consider in our plan to use the same rates and fees that Goulson's used. And that, doesn't that make sense?
No.
I want to ask some questions real quick.
Yeah, sure, I'm just a confused old man.
Yeah, me too. So, the question I ask is, is how are the fees separated into annual and a daily, right, as you would have?
It's just like the same thing that Goulson does, they have a yearly fee and they have a daily fee.
And what would the annual be?
It would be up to, you know, what I really wanted to have happen was that we had a committee and I would like to sponsor that committee. You guys, the committee members, I, I, that's not where I'm going, but I would sponsor that committee and they would let these details out. And we have plenty of qualified people here that could do this. But anyway, um, basically, the fee with, with Goulson is nine dollars. But anyway, um, basically, the fee with, with Galveston is nine dollars per car, and I, I really think it's, on one area it's forty and the others fifty a year. But I thought that we could work, this committee that we would have, they would work that out, and they would work that out working with the GLO. Remember, they would partner with the GLO, and this is by the way, what hits me too, guys, is what a wonderful way to have good relationships with GLO.
We have, we have a good relationship.
But they improved their relationship.
Oh.
Every relationship can be improved in this world.
Thank you, thank you for that, but, uh, we have a great relationship with them.
We're getting ready for the other, the other, one of the other departments of the GLO to come and re-nourish our beach, and that beach, and that's going to happen. Comes a call, we're going to have trucks running in and out of here, we're going to double the cycle, didn't come out of beach for that idea. And again, this is all working with the state, check if you make a beach, working with the state, working with the GLO.
Go, go, Russell.
You ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I just got this agenda Friday, I have plenty of time to prepare. All right, um, to start off, this is the Texas Administration Code from the GLO. One of the opening, why are we wanting to impose a Fee Beach, to limit, limit access, right? To, to limit congestion, to limit people? I've asked you this before, you said that's the reason. Are we doing this to limit the traffic on our beach, Gil?
We're doing it to mitigate overcrowding, and also to get, uh, people on the beach that really care about the beach.
Okay. All right, one of the opening statements from the GLO, "A local government shall not impose a fee or charge for the exercise of the public's right of access to and from public beaches." Am I being loud?
Yeah.
Okay, I was making sure Gil could hear me. All right, next, section B.
That's true.
That is true.
No, we have to repeat, and we're just being respectful. There's nothing, no respect.
No, please, no disrespect.
I understand.
Okay. Number two, unfairly limits public use and/or access to and from public beaches in any manner.
Yes.
Number three, discriminates on the basis of residents.
Yes.
Okay, this is right here on opening page of the GLO, pretty much what we're trying to do.
And that's what I, and when I met with the GLO, I had that, and I read that out to them, okay? And their response were, yes, just to me, right? And I asked them, like, part of this, how, how did Galveston, how did you negotiate this with Galveston, like, and you had it there, right? Common sense, that's the reason, that's the reason. So I sit there and I talk to them, and they said, well, listen, we have these two programs. One is, is a beach user fee and maintenance, okay, where they would actually pay for land and, and give us money to build buildings, all right, things of that nature. And they also, the second part of the, of what they offer is a beach user fee plan above. So I'm confused, I'm a confused old man, so I asked, I said, look, I said, are these two separate programs? And she said, yes, they are. I said, then we don't have to qualify for this fee thing, we just need a simple plan. And they agreed, and then, that's when I said, if we do this, uh, I would propose that we make, that's what I said, part of this thing to the left to be free, the rest to, um, be, um, paid. And they said, give us a minute, they let us think about it, they had to go to, uh, Mrs. Hill, I believe, their, their bosses, they brought their lawyer in there, and they cocked us a little bit, and they said that was reasonable.
Did you consult council or mayor before you made this appointment and went to Austin?
Yes, I did.
And did the mayor tell you, yes, please go ahead and go?
No, I didn't, I just pulled on the door.
I was in that meeting. We asked you not to pursue this because the city has already done it. Who, who attended this meeting with you?
I had Sharon Bowers, she went with me, and she helped drive.
A citizen helped drive?
Yes.
So you made an appointment with GLO and the lawyers with a citizen without the mayor's approval?
I don't know about that.
Okay.
You told me you'd be.
No, it's just, it's just saying, now, I also have emails from GLO, okay? These emails are also addressed to you, all right? I was included, I'm missing Sharon Bowers, a citizen, but.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, one of the things, and it's highlighted, it says, "In regards to your question about the inflammation, implamation of a beach user fee has resulted in decrease in beachgoers in other areas, I recommend you reaching out to Kimberly Danzy with the Park of Trustees Board in Galveston. She may be able to provide this information to you." Did you reach out to her?
I haven't done anything since you guys weren't interested in it.
Okay, I have another statement here on the same email, before you take.
I didn't intend to, I intended for the committee to do this, right?
Okay, can I finish, please?
Sure.
Okay, she also wrote to you, "Before you take the proposal plan and ordinance changes to council, the G- before you take this to council, the GLO recommends sending all proposal plans amendments to our office for an informal review prior, so that you know the changes you are proposing are consistent to the state law and will be approved."
Yeah.
So she advised you not to take this to council either.
I took a preliminary plan to council, once you were so negative, I just stopped with that.
Okay.
I thought no reason to go any further, Gil, none at all.
Okay, well, you also submitted a, a, a not city-supported proposal beach plan, plan and poll, correct?
Excuse me?
You also submitted a proposed beach plan, and there was polls taken.
Yes.
I believe on Facebook, which the city did not support.
Yes.
Correct? And you said the polls were in favor?
They were.
Okay, on your poll, unfortunately, you have provided the citizens with a lot of misinformation, okay? One mainly being the fees. I'm a man, right, I think about numbers. You said a yearly permit was going to be fifty dollars. Data and party.
That's just a proposal.
Okay, what you said, that based on comparable Galveston Seawall Parking, Stewart and F. L. Beach, the following is proposed.
Yeah.
A fifty dollar annual permit, a fifteen dollar Sunday permit, a thirteen dollar, okay? Well, you're comparing us to East Beach, which has such amenities as bathrooms, showers, snack stands, volleyball courts, pickleball courts, and, uh, concert stadiums, all right? When I asked the GLO, and I handed it here in a letter, about what fees they thought we could generate, I believe you were there, Mr. Mayor, they said we could get maybe two to three dollars a day, and maybe at most twelve dollars per any annual pass. So therefore, the poll you sent out to the citizens was inflated by seventy-five percent of funds that would be revenue. So the fact is.
Yeah.
Oh, everybody, can you all hear me in the back?
Kind of.
Okay. So the fact is, you said this was going to be a buzzed, a budget positive, um, what's the term? Endeavor, but your numbers were off by seventy-five percent. The reason I'm saying this is not only are we going to have to charge all the citizens all the beachgoers fees, but us as residents are also going to have to use our tax dollars to pay for this.
Supplement.
It's a supplement. What we can charge for our beach is way below what was given to you on the polls. We can't charge fifty dollars a year, they said we'd be lucky if we could charge twelve dollars a year. Our only amenity is parking, we don't have bathrooms, we don't have volleyball courts, we don't have restrooms, we don't have concession stands. So I'm sorry, the public was, was misinformed, I really appreciate all your hard work.
Can I just say that that's your opinion?
No, it's, it's.
Is this email from the GLO?
So was this item added just as a public shaming for Gil?
No, absolutely.
No, it's not.
Oh!
No, no, no.
Wait, wait, this isn't about education, y'all.
No, it's not about education, but again, my point is.
You got to understand, we can't talk except in meetings like this.
We have to talk that way.
Yeah, so please understand, y'all, y'all are observing council at work here.
Right. So, Russell, can I go back to it?
No, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much, but my claim is just a concept, it's a proposal.
I understand.
And that's all. And it's.
I'm not going to argue about a thing.
Opinion about what comment you might get, until we gave GLO an actual plan, we don't know. Fair enough? And that's what I was trying to do, yeah, I'll put some numbers on it, just common sense, logic, that's all. But you, you disagree, you disagree, you disagree, you disagree, so do I. You got a better number? We won't have a number until we have a plan, until we work with the GLO.
Well, we have those numbers.
You have an opinion.
No, we have those numbers given to us by the GLO.
Do you have any writing?
Yes, it's got emails.
What, what's the date of the email?
Which email?
Excuse me?
I, I have so many.
Oh, yeah, this particular, you just spoke about it, you surely know.
All right, this particular one was August thirtieth of the twenty-second, which states, "The text you included below includes some misinformation about the ability of local governments to charge local fees, beach fees."
Wait a minute, what's, who is this from?
This one is from Natalie Bell.
August?
August of twenty-two, this one here. Another misstatement, again, no funding for cleaning the beach comes from GLO. You mentioned that the GLO would help us pay for beach clean.
What, what we're trying to do is, we, we don't want, this is why we need to do this as a, as a council, so we get.
I'm there, I'm there.
Let me finish, that a way we can give accurate numbers, where we don't put hopes on, on certain citizens who says, oh, look, this is almost a money-making endeavor, you know, fifty dollars.
It really was, the money was secondary.
Fifty dollars, uh, 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 for, for an annual pass, and things like, those numbers were completely.
Yes.
You know, so it gives false hope, and, and, and when you run a poll that states those, gives those numbers, that's what the people think, they are getting factual numbers, and that's the only issue, yeah.
I was not trying to essentially give you that, and I think you know that. Now, here's the thing, here's what I propose, Russell.
Yes, sir.
That I go to GLO, and I clarify this, and I, and I, I'm, everything I do, like, I copy you, 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 and you. Fair enough?
Yeah, well, all of us, yeah.
Okay.
This is the fifth time it's been brought to council. Five times a council, it was agreed it was not a good idea.
When you're talking.
I realize your negativity.
No, it's not negative.
But you're, but you're.
It's really, really.
And you're criticizing about, that you don't think we can get any money out of our fee.
Well, that we can even break even, that we can cost the city in order to do this. We're talking about ninety cars, ninety cars at one time, guys, right, please. We're talking about ninety cars.
They charge.
At a time, you know, you charging two dollars a car, that was. We were advised, we were advised, with what we have, this is what we can charge.
I won't, I won't give forward to that email, but also, I'm going to, I want to go back, and I want to verify everything.
Order, guys, order.
Yeah, you guys are not in a bad condition, that's a fact. You are, but, but in reality, it is business.
For the record, Gil, I appreciate all your hard work, I really do.
Please, don't, no, 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 don't bother me, I don't need it.
No questions?
I mean, I don't need to, okay?
What I'm doing here is, we're, we're trying to clean up.
We do do it.
Clean house, we're trying to rectify misinformation, get it out to the public.
This is not misinformation in the area, and your, and your comment it is, okay? And what I'm saying is, all right, and I think you agree, let me clarify this, fair enough? Then we'll see what the misinformation is, fair enough?
Absolutely.
Thank you. But I still think, and it will always think this is for the city. I can understand what are your negativity, I know you don't like the GLO, I know you don't like the government in your business.
And I, I don't like many, you know, it's all the fees. Anyway, I'm not, I'm not against this, I don't think it works.
Yeah, you guys, what you said, you're not against it, I, I'm there, you don't think it'd work from your past experience with the GLO?
No, I'm not with the GLO, with the process of trying to get it done.
With the GLO, just their business, all right, and their, okay, fine.